Roll call, please. Ms. Spoder.
President.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Coth.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Ms. Poushtree.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
At this time, a forum has been established. Can someone appoint trustee Coth as president pro temp?
I move that trustee Coth be president pro temp for the meeting and the absence of a man.
Second.
All right, second. Roll call. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Ms. Limes.
Ms. Poushtree.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Spoder.
Hi.
Okay. Roll call's been established. We're all straightened out. Everybody, will you please, if you can, rise for the motion.
I am a religious believer in the United States of America and in the Republic for which it stands, one nation under, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Limes, we have the public comments.
We do not see any.
Okay. Then we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 4th, 2024. They're in your packet.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, concerns? Jim, do we got a call?
No.
We can do ayes?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
There's no one participating, minor virtually, so we could do ayes.
Okay. A motion's been made in second. No questions or concerns. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, carry. Next, we have swearing in of police officer Annie Roordance. And I can read this real briefly. Please join me in welcoming police recruit Annie Roordance to the village tonight. Ms. Roordance is joining the Hampshire Police Department as a new recruit and will be headed to Soft Valley Community College Police Academy on May 5th. Ms. Roordance graduated from Dundee Crown High School, earned an associate of applied science in criminal justice at Elgin Community College. She most recently worked as a records clerk at the Elgin Police Department. Ms. Roordance is here tonight with her father, Robert, her sister Lisa, niece Addison, boyfriend, Chris, and her friend Lexi. We will now turn this over to chief.
Aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Salomons were affirmed.
Salomons were affirmed.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the village of Hampshire.
And the laws and ordinances of the village of Hampshire.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of sworn police officer.
Of the office of sworn police officer.
According to the best of my duty.
According to the best of my duty.
Congratulations.
We're gonna take just a couple of minutes so the family can get some pictures.
Brothers.
Okay. We need one to the officers first, since I'm up here.
I'll be officers. Do you want us to take one of those ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could probably.
Because I had worse. I was on midnight and I didn't like 12:00.
Family? You want me to say, Mom?
Yes.
Is there a dinner after this?
We did dinner before.
Have you?
Yes. Did a great job.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we gotta decide that.
Oh, they make it official.
Yeah.
Yep, you're welcome. Unless you want to stay for the meeting.
Annie, they will take some response.
Okay, we're gonna resume. Next is a municipal clerk's proclamation due to the recent passing of our clerk. We'll read this one, if you don't mind. Whereas the office of professional municipal clerk, a time mine or honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, excuse me, provides a professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas is most importantly, recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Therefore, I migrate mayor of the village of Hampshire to recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in further extended appreciation to our municipal clerk, Karen Stuhler, and all the professional municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So, that's for Karen, for Municipal Clerk Week. The next one we have is a proclamation for Arbor Day. I won't read this whole thing, but the village, excuse me, of Burlington has donated a tree to our village on behalf of our previous municipal clerk, Linda Vasquez, who has passed away. And April 26th, 2024 is Arbor Day in the village of Hampshire. And Mike Reeds wants to urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day in support of efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Okay. Moving on. Need a motion to open the public hearing. Or, excuse me, public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 budget. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Didn't see that, sorry. Got it?
Got it, thank you.
Motion's been made in second. Any questions, concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, carry. All right, the public hearing for fiscal year 2025 budget is now open. And?
Public comments?
Do we have? Let's get her. Sorry, do we have any public speaker?
We do. Jessica Levarst.
So, I, hello. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I am here in regards to the proposed water bill increase. If you're on Facebook, you're very aware that I did post yesterday evening upon finding out about the budget decisions. As a homeowner in the village of Hampshire and a taxpayer of the village of Hampshire and a mother of two children, already paying $189 water bill every two months, the proposed increases are absolutely ludicrous. I understand, and I hear the story that this was kicked down the road by the prior board, and, yeah, that sucks. It really does. But in this economy and in this world, to ask for a 150% increase on the capital expenditure is absolutely absurd. The amount of people in this township that live on a fixed income, and I personally live on a fixed income, I'm a salary employee. I don't get overtime. I don't have the opportunity to make additional funds. To have 150% increase on just that one line item is budget breaking. When you talk about a 10% increase on the actual water itself, when the CPI is 3.5%, and Erin, I know you commented back on that, that's not a slight increase. That's doubling, almost tripling, the water rates, which puts us exceedingly higher than Pingery Grove and exceedingly higher than Huntley. So, as a homeowner in this village, these rates and these increases are absolutely absurd and are going to break the budget of people in this, in this community. I, personally, we have a pool, and yes, I fill my pool in the summer. I don't have the option to opt out of sewer because the village does not give me that option. Other local municipalities offer that option. Huntley offers an irrigation option where you can have a second meter for your water irrigation or non-sewer-using water. Hampshire doesn't offer that. This will literally kill homeowners in this town when they're trying to utilize summer uses, trying to water their lawns, trying to keep their homes nice. I have five people in my house. We do use a lot of water. We average about 13,000 gallons a billing cycle. That puts my bill over $250 a month, every quarter, or every, sorry, every bi-month. Yeah. I just, as a homeowner, I can't not say that, to vote yes on this, I understand that there's capital expenditures, I understand that there's never been a water main break, and we don't want there to be one, but to ask for 150% increase in one lift is absolutely ludicrous. It has to be metered out, even if it's metered out over the next three to five years where you're increasing it. You have a $20 a billing cycle capital expenditure, and no one can say what that money's going to. That's been enacted since 2016. What has that money gone to? What has it paid for that now, all of a sudden, we need 150% increase? So, that's my, my two cents. If you follow Facebook, it very clearly raised a lot of hairs in the, in the town and on of people who are very concerned with this increase, especially, again, for seniors living in this community who are on a fixed income, because it is going to be extremely difficult to buy groceries when you have to pay a water bill that is higher than anywhere other locally. So, thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments for the public?
That's it.
Okay. Lori, do you want to move into your?
I will. And I apologize, despite, like, being able to see the slideshow on my screen, you're getting the preview view, so I apologize. I'm not sure what happened. Um, if you will move your chairs up to see it better. Feel free to do that. It's important, it's the budget. Yeah. Just pull it out and, yeah. Chair out and turn it around.
Go for it. You're good.
So, this evening, I'm going to review some of the provisions allowing the budget. This is a little bit different than my prior presentation, but I'd like to remind you of the mission of the staff development of the village. We wish to deliver village services in efficient, equitable, and customer-driven manner with excellence, sustainability, and transparency. My first order of business this evening is to thank you. Thanks to the board, thanks to the budget committee for their very hard work, thanks to the department heads, Chief Pan, our monetary supervisor, David Sterrett, our street supervisor, and of course, Jane Hedges, who, you know, kind of parouses us all together to bring this all together. So, thank you. The fiscal year 25 budget reflects a conservative approach to funding operations and capital projects with consideration of the inflationary period that we're in. With respect to the general fund, this covers the governance portion of our village, so in other words, trustee expenses, the expenses of administration and finance, the police department, and the streets department. The general fund allows this year for continued implementation of our EOP system, purchase of a new snowplow and pickup truck to aid in assisting our street departments to provide services for our residents and our businesses, the purchase of a ditch mower, shoulder machine conveyor, and roller. It includes safeguarding our citizens through safe routes to school and new sidewalks to get people from Hampshire into the middle school and elementary school downtown. It also provides for stormwater remediation at Park and Men. We will be purchasing two additional new squad cars, acquiring two additional police radios, upgrading the live scan fingerprinting machine that's mandated, as well as installing downtown street cameras and securing a street monitoring trailer. The budget does call for a special census as well. The village receives state shared revenues, LGDF, LGDE, LDF, which is essentially income and personal property replacement taxes and motor fuel tax on a per capita basis. And with our growth, in order to see funds sooner rather than later, we are going to be doing a special census to get our fair share. With respect to personnel, we're looking at 3.5 full-time equivalents being added to our staff, two in the police department, a part-time person in admin and streets, and then also a full-time utility individual. Respect to special revenue funds, we are going to support our residential and business community through sponsorship of Coon Creek Days and providing funding to the Chamber of Commerce. We will also be doing special paving projects, including portions of Kelly Road, Whitetail Circle, Panama, and Tulliver. These street projects will be prioritized as we move along in the budget schedule. With respect to capital project funds, oops, I'm sorry. The support for Coon Creek Days, I'm not sure how that came out there, but we will be constructing new early warning sign in TMS Farm. And then, to go to the enterprise fund, in the water department, we will be doing a preliminary engineering and well pump rehabilitation at the TMS Farm location, drinking water treatment plant, as well as the well there. We will be purchasing surge protection devices to protect our current assets, acquiring a pickup truck to be shared with the sewer division, and installing a new insert valve by Warner. For the sewer department, we will be replacing variable frequency drives, replacing two pumps in the filter building, rehabilitating the centrifuge electrical controls, and doing engineering and construction of a new ultraviolet light disinfection system. As you know, I selected this picture, I apologize, it's kind of small, but we talk about, before we talk about some of our future needs, it's important to understand that we kind of simplify our terms. So, when I say painting the water tower, as you know, it becomes way more than that. It includes the rehabilitation of the interior parts, as well as those that are visible on the outside. This was a picture of the Elm Street Water Tower right before it was painted a few years ago. And then, I just wanted to address why we're requesting utility rate increases. Not only will this address the inflationary increases that we're receiving in operating supplies, but it will allow us to save for some of these large projects that are coming down the road. We need to rehabilitate the elevated water storage tank that's located at Gas and US20. We have a pressure releasing valve that needs to be installed over in the Tuscany Woods area. We will be designing and constructing a new drinking water treatment plant near TMS Farm. We will be required to have backup generators at our drinking water treatment plants, so we will be working on installation of those. We have over six miles of four- and six-inch water mains that need to be replaced to increase water flow pressures and to improve that aging infrastructure. We have lead service lines that are being mandated to be replaced. We will be constructing well number 14, and we have transmission mains that will be required to be installed at the same time. Sorry, I'm paging now, and it's not going down. Okay. On the sewer side, we will be required to rehabilitate both oxidation ditches at the wastewater treatment plant, we will require replacement of digested sludge, de-watering centrifuges, installation of digesters for additional capacity, and improvements to the Higgins Road lift station. In addition, we will have to rehabilitate the Oakstead lift station, we have manhole repairs that need to be consistently completed, and we will have to do modification to the diversion shaper and the cross clarifier flow. We have clarifier rehabilitation that's necessary and force main reconfiguration to the oxidation ditches. Overall, it's approximately $3.5 million of need in the water division and $3 million in the sewer division. So, that's all I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. There is one adjustment that needs to be made to exhibit A when we get to the ordinance, so I will address that at that time.
Ms. Limes, can you, because we have people here, can you explain a little bit, you have the picture of the water tower that needed to be done, and if you could identify, that's just one project, if you could identify with the amount of the capital fund that gets collected each year, the approximate amount of dollars, can you, can you answer that first?
It's a.
As it is today. I mean, ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, we could go to the budget document itself, and it would show, I believe, about $240,000 in revenue in that area right now.
Okay. Four years ago, we did that tank, the big water tower. How much did that cost four years ago?
It was nearly a half a million dollars to paint and rehabilitate that four years ago.
So, that would have been two and a half years of the capital money that we collect from our residents.
That's accurate.
To be able to do that. We have another one that has to be redone, and just to use that same example, because it's a water tower, we have to do the same thing to another water tower and rehab it all the way from the inside and the outside and repaint the outside.
Right.
And how much is that at this point, four years later, to do the same job that we did four years ago with all the inflation? How much is that?
It is a smaller water tower and is estimated to cost about $800,000.
Okay. So, that would be two, that four years of the capital fund project to be able to do that.
Right.
And that was removed from the budget this year, wasn't it?
It was.
We're gonna put that, we're gonna just further down the road. Okay.
Any other questions? I have a question.
Yes.
How many, do we know approximately how many water main breaks there were last year? I think there were close to a dozen.
That sounds about right to me. I don't have any.
Okay. So, so everybody knows with the aging infrastructure, we had almost 12 water main breaks last year because of the duct aligners shot, and each one's expensive for contractor to come rip it up, fix it, and then patch it and everything. It ties up our public works and everything. So, I just wanted everybody to keep that in mind. That's quite a bit of money we don't budget for, because you never budget, you don't never know when it's gonna break. But I know it's been reported that there were no water main breaks last year, no any breaks. I just wanted the public to know there was close to a dozen breaks.
Can I ask, do just, the board authorized a, I don't know what it's called, survey, a look at the water system, and it was a deep dive into it. Can we get that summarized as to kind of what they found or how long it took to it? I mean, what the purpose was that we did that?
I can give you a brief summary. It was a pretty exhaustive report, as you know. We spent a whole Saturday in October with the board here, about four hours that day reviewing that report. So, we did contract with EEI a year ago to conduct a master plan review of our water and sewer infrastructure and equipment, as well as to give us a plan on how to pay for it. So, that study included the rate increases that are recommended in this budget and that were recommended by the budget maybe about a month ago. There were roughly $60 million of improvements that need to be made over the next 20 years, so we're only addressing the first few years of those. And I would also mention that there is a capital improvement plan on our website that's been up there now for three years. Our first capital improvement plan was presented for the 21, 22 budget, and that is on the website, and it does explain where all of our capital spending has gone for the last three years and where it's planned to go for the next 10. So, this, that study was completed in October and presented to the village board. The village board has been deliberating since October and then voted at the budget committee to proceed with the improvements for this fiscal year. So, that included a new water, excuse me, new water treatment plan, opening up the second train or the second line of water, excuse me, sewer treatment line. Right now, we're only using about 45% capacity of our sewer treatment, but in order to activate that second line, we have to put a lot of investment of equipment into that to make it, to bring that capacity up. So, those are the primary purposes. Lori mentioned several things tonight that are in this current budget. She mentioned variable frequency drive pumps, those can be $80,000 to $100,000 pumps sometimes. So, this equipment is very, very expensive, and we do as much in-house work as we can. We have refurbished pumps and motors, we built them so that they can use a trade-in program. We do a lot of our own working house, but we only have five people in the water department, and we'll be adding a sixth one next, coming to fiscal year, so it's a lot of responsibility.
Is that for both the water and the sewer departments?
Yes, water and sewer. And they also drive a snowplow and water.
When you're talking about, because I know Ms. Limes, and thank you for the presentation, a lot of the capital projects, you're saying new, new, but it's not always a brand-new thing. It is a replacement of something that is there. So, it may be a new pump or a new thing.
So it may be a new pump or a new thing, but it's because it's replacing something that is aged and has to be replaced or is at risk of failure. Correct. And that 60 million that EEI, I just want to make sure I include it, they talked about wasn't an expansion of our system, it was a replacement of aged infrastructure of our current system.
That's right. Most of the expansion of our system comes from development.
And they pay for that.
The developer, yes, for example, Tams Farm, all the new roads in there, all the water and sewer lines are being paid for by the contractor. All of the new Prairie Ridge development is being done by Crown Development. They're putting all the roads at their expense, the curves and gutter at their expense, and all the water and sewer lines at their expense. So the village really has no cost for new development infrastructure. If they need a new lift station, for example, lift station moves, it transfers, when gravity doesn't move our sewage as fast as it should, we have to have a lift station that pumps it down there against gravity. There will be a new lift station paid for by Crown in the Prairie Ridge development. It's not cheap, it's very expensive. So most of this equipment is provided by developers. At some point, there becomes a place in town where, you know, two developments get really close and the village wants to loop that system. It's only in those cases where we really have to spend our own money for it. And a good example of that was two years ago when we put in a one-mile, 12-inch, we call it, connecting our two systems waterline. It's about a $1.3 million project. We did receive grant funds for that, but that took about three months, and that connected the Tams Farm water tower with the water tower, with the PRV valve that connects it to the northern system. Prior to that, we only had 48 hours worth of water in that elevated tank up on Route 20. So if we had some sort of failure, the truck stops and anybody that lives in that area would be without water after 48 hours. That never happened, but that's the good news. Since the board authorized that connection, now that system is entirely looped, so the entire village system is looped now. It improves the pressure, balances the pressure out, and it's a lot easier for our people to manage it, the water department, and it's a lot better for fire protection.
And that, if I remember right, I mean, and I know I've been on the board for a long time, but that was actually a project that kept being delayed because there just wasn't funds for it
Right.
Until the grant got secured, because the grant paid a majority of that.
Right, when I first came here, there were three really high priority projects. Highland Avenue was a flood remediation challenge. The residents up there were having a lot of problems. The Schmidt Park and Rin, just around the corner here, and then that project, those were three projects the village had been trying to fund for a long time. We were trying to use the, if you recall, we had the community development block grant money that came back from the loan program. Federal government would not let us use it for that program, so we had to look for other funds. We ended up using some of our ARPA funds for that, some of the federal COVID relief funds.
The first grant that we received for that project was actually in 2010, and then we received a second grant as well, in addition to the ARPA funds that were used.
Had it not been for those, we wouldn't have been able to
No.
When I came to the village, and it's almost five years now, it doesn't seem like that long, a few years ago now, you all expressed to me that there was a concern about aging infrastructure and equipment. It's also been something on Lori's mind as a finance director for years, and I know both of our superintendents in public works. So we did, we spent a lot of time those first two years really evaluating our infrastructure as we could on our own, and then after two years, three years, that's when the board decided that we really need to have EEI go take a deeper dive. So that's been a big priority for us, is to understand our capital needs and how we can finance them.
Can we explain the number of wells that we have, the number of wells that are working, and what the status is of each of those that provide the water, the drinking water for the residents?
She can do that.
We have well number nine that's located on Barn Owl, right by Schmidt Park, and there's a drinking water treatment plant right by that. We have well number 10 that is located on Click Street, and well number 13 that's active up on Harmony Road by the drinking water treatment plant up there. Both wells 10 and 13 are treated, the water is treated at the treatment plant on Harmony Road. So those are our three active wells.
Do we have other wells then that we can't use?
We have well number 12 that is in the ground at Tams Farm. There's no drinking water treatment plant to treat the water, so it is currently in, is available, but not available, if that makes sense.
And that's part of that capital that you had up there, where it was rehabbing that and the
Yes.
The developer puts in the drinking water treatment plant, then that well can come online.
Well, let me explain that a little bit. That's one example where that well was actually dug by Crown back before the 08 recession, at least it was paid for by them. And then at some point, when the 08 recession happened, everything stopped, well, the building stopped, there was a lot of negotiation between the bank, the bonds, the village, and Crown. Ultimately, that well was abandoned, so there's a pump down there, we don't know what condition it's in, but it's now the village's responsibility to complete that, and that was part of the negotiated settlement after the 08 recession.
And that well in that vicinity is residential homes, the high school, the elementary center
Correct.
Like those areas.
Correct.
So it's been 16 years that the pump was put down there, and it's been closed since the recession that hit.
Right. Now we'll have, eventually we'll have to go down and see what kind of condition it's in, if it's in good shape, then at least we have the pump, and then we'll have to have the water treatment plant according to our plan in future years.
Okay, do I remember correctly that it was, we thought it was going to take about $200,000 just to go back down there and to pull up the pump and bring it back and rehab it?
That's
And again, it's $200,000 a year that we get from the capital fund. Okay.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 budget. Any other second? On the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice hearing. Bill Nelson? Turn it over to our village manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Proton. At this point, we would ask your consideration of the ordinance approving the fiscal year 2025 budget. You have this in the packet as well as you have an introduction and the explanation for financial lines.
Any questions on the ordinance 24-14?
One question, have there been any changes since the last village board meeting on what was discussed and what is in the budget?
There have been.
Or is it exactly the same?
There have been no changes.
Okay.
I do want to point out, maybe direct you to page 14 of the budget or page 27 of your packet. As you know, the motor vehicle infrastructure fee was not recommended by the budget committee. That is still in here, so I either need to replace this page with all zeros, or if you adopt the budget as is, we're not bringing forward the motor vehicle fee, so.
And then, just as the chair of the budget committee, I'd rather see the documentation match what is passed and intended, so if it is intended that the recommendation was not to do that, then this page would be replaced with all zeros.
I will do that. So that would be
That would be mine.
Yep.
The board okay with that?
Absolutely. That's my apologies, I grabbed the wrong page. Fun board.
It's the, what'd you say, page 27?
Page 27 of the packet and page 14 of the budget.
So where it says construction, debt issue, debt service principal, debt service interest, and the vehicle tax, all would just be zero.
All of them would be zero.
So the salary review, okay with that? Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Then we, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance, approving the fiscal year 2025 budget, ordinance number 24-14, with the removal of page 27, capital improvements.
Okay, with the removal.
Our change in
Remove and replace.
Removal, yeah. Removal and replace $1. Some of it. One favor, signify by saying aye.
Do we have to vote on this individually, just because?
We can do a roll call. We can roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Before we go into that, though, I mean, just to have an opportunity to say something, because we do have that still, is, this has been a very painful journey to look at the infrastructure of the village. It's been two years as we've been looking at surveys and kind of investigating exactly what's going on in the different areas of the town. We have certain areas that are newer with brand-new subdivisions going in, and we have some that are almost over 150 years old, the, almost the age of this town. And the most important thing that we do is provide clean drinking water for our village. If we don't have that, we're really not serving our residents. Safety of police officers and the roads, including them, are some of the most important things we do. Everything is important that we do, but we've really had to face the amount of problems that we have with the drinking water in the system. And as the mayor spoke at a couple different meetings, is that we need to face that, and we need to make sure that we're not in the news like some of those south suburban towns that had no water, and they're bringing their residents cases of bottles of water and buckets so that they can shower. We don't want that to happen, but our system is very, very old, and one of the things that I think I remember saying is to replace all the pipes that we need, because they're three inches and they need to be four and six inches to get the water to where it needs to go as we grow, and to replace all of that would be from Hampshire all the way to Wrigley Field. That's how much piping as you go everywhere in the town to do it. I heard a different number today, but somebody did use that example to meet a Wrigley Field, and so that's kind of stuck in my mind. But if we don't have clean water, we're going to have all kinds of other problems that come in, you know. I just, it's one of the hardest decisions that I've made since being on this board, because we had to invest in the study to see exactly where we were at, and $70 million to do all the things that we need to bring Hampshire up to where it needs to be, between mandates that come from the state of Illinois that require that we have body cams and cameras on every one of our officers, having a radio system that we have no control but have to change it for our police because King County changes the system that they use and that requires us if we're going to continue to have 911 service, you know, we're connected to them, we have to make those changes. Those are not always things that we budget, but they come up. Water and public safety, plows to make sure our roads are cleared. During the course of the hearings that we had and the budget process, the question was asked to our streets department, when we open up these subdivisions, the new ones that are there, what are we going to need? Two more plows. A plow is what, $200,000 for a plow? The amount of money is amazing, and six cents of the dollar that you pay for your, every dollar of your tax money that you put in there, only six cents comes to the village, six cents, and we have to do miracles with that amount of money. And I think we finally come to the point where the buck stops, and we have to make the changes, or we're going to have some serious issues. And as painful as it is, this is what we were elected, what I was elected to do, I don't want to speak for my board, what I was elected to do to make sure that we make decisions in the best interests of our residents. And it is going to be painful, and every one of us are going to be paying those same increases in order to be able to buy a pump that we need, which is $50,000, you know, $80,000. Everything comes with a huge amount, and all of our bills and the things that we pay are online every single meeting that people look at. You know, what is that pump, and how come it's $88,000? Wow. And I know I'm rattling on a little bit, but I just wanted to be able to express that this is not an easy thing. We're not, we've been looking at this and doing budgeting for two years. Last year, we started looking at some of the things that we need to pay, and we didn't have the ability to do it, and we were doing a knee-jerk reaction. That was, as the former budget chairman, I felt, we really need to be able to dig in and find other ways to pay for it, so that we don't always go back to the residents. And we're looking at grants, we're looking at multiple other funding sources to be able to keep it less money. The decision had to be made whether, let's raise it only 5% this year, and then another 5% next year, 5% the next year. It doesn't, it doesn't allow us to be able to fix the major things that have to be done, and at the same time, that makes the residents angrier and angrier, because every year we come up with more things that, you know, another increase. That money gets used from that capital fund that you pay every two months. I described where it goes. Every pump, every piece of infrastructure that we need to use to replace the water system, whether sewer or water, gets spent. It's not sitting in some fund that nobody's touched and we're not using. It gets passed in every single budget, or every single, what do you call this, accounts payable that we pay every single week, twice a month, and you look at it and you can see where the money is going. Anything that's dealing with water and sewer and infrastructure is in there. We're not sitting on money. $480,000 or whatever we said that for that water tower, that was three, two and a half, three years' worth of the fund. So it's not sitting somewhere. It's not a secret as to where that money's being spent. It's in this every single, every meeting, so, but we need to make some major decisions, and we need to fix things now. $70 million to fix all the things that we need, and we're dealing with, what, six, you said, six and six million on the water in the sewer to fix some? Three and three. So we're addressing 6 million of that, which is just kind of a drop in the bucket, but the most serious things that we need. So I'm talking to the people in the room, I'm talking to the people that are listening, and it's heartfelt. These have been very painful meetings, and sitting on a Saturday, and those of us that were here walked out of that meeting after five hours of learning about what was going on, and it was like a gut punch, and we needed to fix it. And so that's what we're trying to do now. So that is my very long comments, and I thank you for your indulgences, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Okay, is there any other comments, questions, concerns?
I just have a comment. There were a lot of things given us tonight. I want to thank Ms. Lyons for leading us all through the budget process again, and for presenting today a lot of the facts of what the plans are, why we were looking to do things, or why staff asked the recommendations from the budget committee to do those things. So thank you for leading that to all the staff that makes cuts. There are a lot of things that didn't make the budget. I realize those were tough decisions. Hopefully, we can get those things in in the future years. You know, the vehicle tax, I know was a question as well that was not recommended coming. That was part of what was, the motion is to zero out that page. And Mr. Sarah was here telling us that his guys are outside in the snow and the freezing cold to break up ice off of the salt so they can get out there, because we don't have a public works building, can't afford them.
Cleaning up a salt.
And we also said we can't burden the residents with absolutely everything, and so how do we find different ways of funding that? And so, Mr. Hedges, thank you for continuing to work to figure out if they're state or federal or some type of grant funds to cover that so that our residents don't have to pick it up. So it's, it is a tough thing to do some of the increases in here, but I also want to recognize there are a lot of cuts that were drawn from here, and that staff has presented a balanced budget, which I appreciate.
The only comment I have is, we do not have a public works building. I've been trustee, elected to this board for over eight years. We have kicked the can down the road till there's no can left. We have tough decisions to make. We sat here on a Saturday for six, seven hours, and the study that the engineering department's done shows we've got four-inch and six-inch water main that breaks repeatedly. There's been Facebook posts and stuff, there was no water main breaks, no breaks last year, been over a dozen. So there's a lot of ill-informed people saying things they don't understand. But when we go out and buy But when we go out and buy a snowplow and we spend $280,000, we don't have a shop to put in, it sits outside. We got a million dollars of equipment that was sitting outside rotting away in the sun and the rain until our village manager was able to secure a place for indoor parking. So now the trucks are parked inside. That 280,000 that we spend on a truck, that's taxpayer money. And we want to remind everyone, everyone on this board is paying the same thing. We're all paying the same thing. We all live in town, we all pay the same water, same sewer, same taxes. And like our colleague said here, six cents on the dollar comes back to us. So it was, it was a hard, but gut punch, but we have to do something when we have water main that is failing and the length of it is from here to Solder, not Wrigley, Solder.
Okay.
So I'm not sure which is farther, but I just, so that's all, that's all I got. I want the public to know this wasn't, we didn't flip a coin and say, yeah, let's do this. This was, this went on and on and on and on. We did everything we could. I applaud Mr. Hedges and staff. They've turned over every rock they could turn over, find money from the state and feds to put less burden on our residents, which were residents as well. So that's all I got.
You've been mentioning a couple of times about the public works building and I want to remind everyone, we still don't have a funding mechanism for that. So as trustee Coth said, that equipment is sitting outside. We are paying exorbitant amounts to maintain, repair, because we cannot, we don't have a facility to put it in. And the budget committee recommended that we, the, like, better term, vehicle fee. So it's, it's a difficult choice to make when we still know that that stuff's still going to be sitting outside and we're still going to be paying two, three, four years from now to maintain that stuff that should be sitting inside and we shouldn't have to be paying, but do we really want to put that, that on our water system? Is the struggle I think we all have. So if you're going to have to choose between one, I know what my choice is going to be.
Yes, we're in the comment section.
Okay, so I went back, I did listen to our residents and went back and looked at all of those different towns as well as Genoa tried to convert Elgin. I cannot convert cubic feet into 1,000 gallons. I tried and I was like, there's no way at $1,000 per 1,000 gallons. So I'm clearly doing the math wrong, so I'm willing to walk away from that one. But Huntley is $10,002 per 1,000 gallons with an $11 capital fee plus a 75 connect fee. They have a 550 water and 550 sewer capital fee and that's every single month. So that $11 is now 22. Pangree is 853 as you stated, but it's a $45 service fee.
Per month.
Per month. So that's $90 per billing cycle, which is vastly different than the 20 we have or the 50 that we are proposing per billing cycle. Gilbert's is 550 water, 550 sewer with an $11, I'm sorry, for a total of $11. That looks like a bargain. That sounds awesome, but we don't have their system. Genoa is, depends on if you live in town or not, because it's a $19 fee if you live in town and a $9 per 1,000 gallons. If you live outside of town, it's a $28.50 fee plus the 13.25 per 1,000 gallons. And if you look at where we're proposing to put this, yes, it's painful, believe me, I pay it too. I've had five teenage foster kids, plus my own two. That's a lot of water. That's a ridiculous amount of water. Okay, but I have to pay it too and it's going to hurt. But I can't live, leave my kids with no clean water and I'm not going to leave somebody else's kids without it either. That's irresponsible. And being elected means sometimes we have to make the hard decisions that people don't like and that's okay. If you want to run, please do. Then you could sit here and listen and hear all of the details and understand why these are hard choices. Nobody wants to raise the rates. Nobody wants to pay more for anything. We don't have it either, but we have to find it somehow because we can't keep borrowing from our kids' futures. We can't do that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the $20 capital fee that we have now is essentially a Band-Aid. It's, it's repairing all the water mains that break. It's, it's going to fix equipment that fails. It's not.
Increase in chemicals costs.
It's, it's not going to improve anything that we know has to be improved and to sit here knowing what our water system is like now and what needs to happen to make it safe for the future. I can't in good conscience just let that go out of my head.
I do want to just say though, we don't have unsafe drinking water.
No, we don't. It is very safe.
And the water department does a phenomenal job. It's avoiding the catastrophe down the road by not replacing and repairing the aids to it, right? And maintaining that. So I just don't want anybody, because I think we've been saying the right thing, but we have very good drinking water.
We don't know 10 years down the road if state status quo, will we have safe drinking water then? I can't.
If 12 turns into 24 water mains because they're four and six inch wide, do we have the money to replace those occasionally or?
Nope.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? I'll entertain a motion to.
I have a motion, I have a one and two.
Oh, that spends a lot, I forgot.
But it was important to ask.
Yes. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the ordinance approving fiscal year 2025 budget 24-14. Motion's been made. Second, roll call, please.
Ms. Paul Street. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you, Mr. Coth. With that, we would ask your consideration for an ordinance approving utility fees in reference to the Chicago Naperville Elgin MSA. You have in your packets on page 62, an agenda supplement from Finance Director Lyons. This includes a 10% increase in water usage rates and a 3.3% increase in sewer rates. This also cleans up some of the references to the CPI index for auto increases each year. And this will result in a new water rate of $624 per 1,000 gallons and a sewer rate of $7.30 per 1,000 gallons. We would ask your consideration.
Questions, concerns, comments?
Just for clarity's sake, this is what was already included in the budget. It's not an increase of what was just approved.
That's correct.
It's to allow the increase.
Budget itself can't create an ordinance, so you have to vote on each one of your answers.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I entertain a motion to approve ordinance 24-15, approving utility fees in reference to Chicago Naperville Elgin MSA.
Motion, so?
Motion seconded.
I motion.
I'll second. Motion's been made. Second, any comments or questions, concerns? Please call, roll.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you, Mr. Coth. With that, we would ask your consideration for a resolution approving garbage fees. You have in your agenda, excuse me, in your packet, an agenda supplement from Finance Director Lyons on page 66. I think I'll defer to trustee Kelly who likes to talk about our contract for garbage. This is, he was on this Public Services Committee when this was adopted and I think we're both proud of what we accomplished. We did go out for bid in July of 20, excuse me, we went out for bid about three years ago now. Mr. Kelly, you'd like to pick up on that.
Yeah, just the thing that I, and I think I may have put this in the Facebook post to one of the questions a resident asked, but when it comes to the Flood Brothers, the increase that we have here is part of our contractually obligated increase. We agreed to it when we signed that contract, which I think is a five year, it's a five year contract. And when we switched, at the end of that five year, we'll still be lower, a lower rate both for senior and non-senior rates than we would have the very next year for waste management. And the per year increase with the previous vendor was a higher per year percentage increase than this. So when we looked across it, we were like, it doesn't make sense not to change. It saves the residents a ton of money. So Mr. Hedges led us through that with staff and this is continuing to be a result. This, this fee here, I'm taking a guess, trying to go back in my mind, but I think it's still almost $4 a billing cycle cheaper than what the very next year would have been. I thought it was going to go up to like $26 or $28.
I thought the. The rate at the end of five years will be lower than what we were paying with.
In the first part of the first year, first year.
Right.
But this is contractually obligated with our five year agreement with waste management. This isn't to do any type of capital or anything else. That's what this is.
And just a comment is that when this happened, you know, some residents were reluctant because waste management, they had good customer service, you paid a lot for their service, they did everything pretty well. People were concerned about whether Flood Brothers would or not. And one of the things that mattered to us is the Flood Brothers, a family business, everybody we called is named Flood, including Michael Flood, a resident. And they're just very good to work with. Our customer service people work with them all the time. Terry works with them on billing and our garbage service has been very well managed by Flood. And as most of you know, they donate almost all of the porta potties to all the public events. Thank you.
And some of the services that they utilize, or some of the services our residents can utilize, they can get on Flood's, Flood's site or our Hampshire.
Right, we have a landing page for Flood Brothers.
Because you can get, they have paint collection twice a year, they take bedding, furniture, stuff like that.
Large, I don't know.
Their hazardous chemicals is once a month.
Once a month.
And they will take almost all those things if you just call in advance, you have to like pick up almost anything.
There's a lot of services that our general public probably doesn't know, Flood offers.
And waste management charges for all of those.
Every bit.
And I think it's worth noting, I don't think, I don't know if you guys are on the board when we approve this contract or not, but this is, I realize we just raised, voted to raise the rate of capital fee, but this was an area where we really looked at it and said, this is where we can save our residents some money. This is where we can bring the fees down, not knowing what was coming in the future, but we do actively look for this stuff, lessen the burden on the resident.
And if I could point them, that the increase, I mean, it was kind of part of the contract as to how much it would go up for those five years. It goes up 58 cents a billing cycle for seniors and 86 cents a cycle for non seniors. So that's, that's for a cycle, so divide that by two for a two month, so you're, you know, you're talking, yeah. You're talking less than a dollar.
29 cents.
Yeah.
Forty three cents.
So very, very minimal, but it was part of the contract, but we have to.
And we didn't, we didn't look at that, we were, I remember sitting in those meetings, we compared month to month, year to year with what, and it wasn't just with waste management, we looked at about four other companies as well.
We went up to bid.
Yeah. So this is by far the best deal.
Don't they also give us porta potties for free for all of our villages?
Definitely.
Okay, he did say that, okay.
Well, not just porta potties, but the trash.
And the same.
Porta potties, hand washing stations, all of that, they've been really good. And we've, I think they agreed to three events in the beginning and now we've had about seven or eight hours to do, about 10 events to take in the first. And that's not true, but for example, the historical society was going to have to, it's about $600 that we just call Flood Brothers and maybe we'd be kind of.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution 24-14, approving the contractual increase in the garbage fees.
Motion seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Again, any questions, concerns? Third, call, roll.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you, Mr. Coth. With that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving capital improvement fees. You have in your packet on page 69 or 135, an agenda supplement from Finance Director Lyons. The fees will be going as described in the budget to $30 for water per billing cycle and $20 per billing cycle for sewer and billing cycles in two months. These fees along with $1 sewer billing charge will increase the village's minimum utility bill from $21 per billing cycle to $51 per base. We would ask for your consideration.
So we've already approved it in the budget. This just kind of is just one additional step we have to take after we've already approved it.
And codify it.
Codify it, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 24-16, approving the capital improvement fees scheduled. So, motion. Second, motion's been made and seconded. Again, any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, we'll, third, call, roll.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Mr. Paulston is online with us tonight, so with that, Mr. Coth, we would ask your consideration of a resolution approving a professional services agreement with the EI for the North State Street resurfacing project. Now, this is design engineering in the amount of $44,976. Tim, can you explain this briefly, please?
Yeah, thanks, Jerry. This is a project to resurface State Street basically from where the creek is to north to Allen Road. It's, it's funded through the Kane Kendall Council of Mayors that was funding was set up in 2020. And now it's time to move that forward. It's a, the construction cost is funded 75% by the federal government and 25% by the, by the Village Hampshire. So then we want to get started on the engineering so that we can be ready to go for next summer for construction to get it through the IDOT process.
Is it going to be just a grain and resurface?
There will also be carbon gutter repairs and yes, removal and resurfacing, yes, and you know, base repair as identified and necessary, but overall just a resurfacing, not a complete rehabilitation.
What's our car lot going to do on Town Place Road if we're going to break up their street?
This is.
The car lot?
Well, it's always set in the open to close it down one lane while.
Which is another topic we should probably talk about at the end of the month.
Those cars will be off of their pockets, kind of, for a moment.
The cars will be off of it? Okay, it was, it's another car.
Temporary accommodation.
Okay, thank you for that. So this would be for this part of State Street from the law office, right by the creek, all the way to Allen Road then? That's, it's going to start the next year, so this is just the engineering part. And then we have, it's paid for then by Kane County.
75%.
75%.
By Kane County, by letter of will.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, go ahead. How long do we, you probably would know better, how long do, when you resurface a road, how long does that, how many years do you get on it?
1015. It depends what the mixed design is. If they're, the engineering, they'll look at different mixed designs. There's actually, they just don't, it ain't oil and car and stone anymore. They actually add chemicals to the asphalt.
Right. Since it's a federally funded project, they'll be required to use IDOT certified mixed designs and you know, IDOT certified asphalt plant to ensure, you know, the quality of the asphalt that's going down. So we would expect, you know, 20 years if it's, if may, you know, regular maintenance done throughout the time, crack sealing, patching as needed, you know, through that 20 year process, so.
So, but my reason for asking is in 20 years, do we, are we foreseeing a need for any adjustments to the width of the road as far as turn lanes? Any business coming in that's required, going to require? Any business coming in that's required, gonna require cut-ins?
We have, we have already one for a cut on the east side. There is some interest in commercial development on the east side of State Street right now. The property owners, for first time considering some people that are asking about a property. The cost, the, the plan is to extend downtown, north all the way to Allen Road. So we would expect that to be commercial on the east side and then the municipal campus on the west side.
Okay.
But, but, I'm sorry, you're quick, yes.
They'll require more.
Additional purpose could be made.
But, but it won't require drastic changes to the road. I mean, my, my view is we have done this and then six years from now, we're gonna have to redo the roof to make it larger.
This is generally a three-lane, has the width for a three-lane section. You know, there's the turn lanes at Town Place at Allen, and through a large section of it, there's a striped island. So there, there is with the existing width, a three-lane section that'll allow two, turn lanes if there are additional, that's for commercial development.
Okay.
One question I have. I know with previous projects, particularly on my time with the Park District, when you would get a specific type of grant that was a matching grant where, you know, kind of like in this where it's seventy-five percent federal and we pay twenty-five percent. Often design or design engineering is added into the construction cost for a total amount. And then the seventy-five percent pays that total amount, twenty-five percent of whatever that total is. Is the seventy-five percent federal for this cover seventy-five percent of the combined construction and design engineering costs?
No, that's only a split on the construction and construction engineering cost. The design, in this program, the design engineering cost is the responsibility of the village.
Or is just the design?
Correct.
Can you walk us through the difference of design versus construction engineering? Because this is an existing road that is known and has been worked on by E E I in the past. So just can you walk us through what you do in a design engineer for known roads like this versus construction engineering?
With the, with the I dot process, they have a three-phase process, phase one and phase two. So this is phase one and phase two design engineering. Phase one is a preliminary engineering and environmental survey to do all the requirements for I dot. And then the design process is preparing the, you know, the plan sheets for, for the resurfacing, for the curb removals, preparing the specifications per I dot and doing a, the submitting plans I dot in a, in a pre-final stage and then a final stage. And then preparing the contract documents for I dot. And I dot has a very specific procedure you have to use. So they have, they have pay items that you have to use per their, their coding book. So you have to prepare all the quantities per their, per their specifications. And, and, you know, set it up per their document requirements is why it is a more extensive engineering than we would have on a resurfacing that wasn't using I dot funds.
So in that phase one, your team already has all of those drawings, correct? From the last time work was done on state, like you just need to really update things because you're not changing physically the road, correct?
We're not changing physically the road, but I dot will require us to do certain survey, survey documents of the current and existing conditions.
Just care, are there water pipes underneath that road? I mean, they were for streetscape closer here, but are there water pipes out there now that we're gonna come across?
We won't be going that deep.
Okay.
In streetscape, we had to go really deep.
Okay.
But this is just.
Just resurface.
And most of the water pipe is in the parkway out there. I was just saying that in this case, most of the water, for a good portion of the water main is outside the roadway anyway. But you're correct, we're not going deep enough to impact the water main.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a resolution twenty-four dash ten approving professional services with E E I for the State Street resurfacing in the design engineering stage for the amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Motion's been made in second. Any comments, questions?
I have one last question, Mr. Paulson. On page eighty-five of the packet is your attachment D estimated schedule. Am I reading this correctly, that the design engineering phase of this isn't scheduled to be completed until June of twenty twenty-five?
Correct. June of twenty-five would be when it would be on the I dot, the I dot letting schedule. So I dot does the bidding or collects the bids for this. It goes on their, their performance or their monthly letting that they do every month. So that would be the point when it would be out to bid, yes.
And when does E E I invoice for the work?
It would be monthly as, as work is done.
So is, is the full amount accounted in this fiscal budget or some of that carried over to the next fiscal budget?
It is accounted for in this budget. Yeah. The whole system with I dot is very weird. Like we have to pay even like the construction engineering piece. We have to pay a hundred percent of the engineering and they, you know, it's we pay them, they pay us type of situation. It's very weird. Mr. Paulson, if I could ask them too, is, you said, you just answered his question that it was, it was June of twenty twenty-five that it, that'll be finished.
No, sorry, is it kind of true to be?
That'll be left. Okay.
That's when they send out for bidding.
Okay. Again, because I'm looking at the timing going, I certainly don't want them ripping that up during Coon Creek. So that's why I asked, so.
We'll do our best, but we don't have the drawing.
Yeah.
It is our road, though.
We'll go through. Car lot name from another direction to use it, so, all right.
Okay, motion been made in second. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none, will the third please call the roll?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mrs. Pellstren?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Pell?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. We would now ask your consideration of a resolution approving the letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge Neighborhoods T Z and double A. You have in your packet on page ninety-three or one thirty-five on the agenda supplement. For Mr. Paulson, who's still available to answer questions, all the documentation is in the, in your packet. And this project is proven for this one.
Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve Resilient Resolution twenty-four dash eleven, approving the letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge Neighborhoods T Z and double A.
Can you just say where that one is? Do we know where?
There's the map.
See, I'm like, exactly. It's in the, around to the west.
Okay. We've got so many projects.
This is Kelly Road right here. So it's north of Kelly, right in this area here.
Okay.
And then they'll be moving further to the east in the near future. In the very next motion, they'll be moving.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, will the third please call the roll?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mrs. Pellstren?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we would ask for consideration of a resolution approving a letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge Neighborhood J. This, this project is, excuse me, also moving along as, as expected. And now the documentation is in the packet. Same, same processes for our motion.
Questions? Any concerns? Entertain a motion approving Resolution twenty-four twelve, twenty-four dash twelve, approving the letter of credit reduction for the Prairie Ridge Neighborhood J.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, will the third, Stuhler, please call the roll?
Mrs. Pellstren?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Now we would ask for consideration of a resolution authorizing village staff to submit a certificate of authority for oxal purchase for fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six in an amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. You might recall that we acted on a similar ordinance, excuse me, resolution just two weeks ago. But that was authorization for the, for I dot, for us to purchase, excuse me, for us to receive our.
It's to utilize M F P.
More fuel tax funds. Now we need a resolution to allow us to purchase salt from the C M S, Central Management Services, is who we buy the salt from. So this is simply allowing us to buy the salt from the regular. And we discussed it the last meeting. I think Mr. Kelly asked, we can, we will purchase even, we must purchase ninety percent of this amount. The two hundred and seventeen is, is a hundred and twenty percent of the amount.
It looks that it's the same, so the same amount, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from last year, and it's two hundred and seventeen thousand for this year. The rate for the previous year was eighty-two twelve per ton, and I don't see a different number, so I'm assuming that's the same, something that didn't go up between the years.
Well, it's negotiated by the state.
Okay, so that's why.
They're buying it through the state central management services, which is run by the state of Illinois, C M S. So they're the ones that negotiate the price with the salt company.
Okay, so they left it at the same amount. I mean, everything goes out. That's why I was just surprised.
It's our, well, we purchased it the last year's rate. We don't have this year's rate, so we have to go off what we need.
Okay, that's why.
And by the way, this is a time, time factor. We'll be uploading this information tomorrow morning because the deadline for any salt this year is Sunday.
Okay, I'll entertain a resolution authorizing village staff to submit their certificate of authority for oxal purchase for twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand. For people keeping track, this is Resolution twenty-four dash thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, will the third, Stuhler, please call the roll?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mrs. Pellstren?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
That it, Mr. Hedges?
That is it, Mr. Coe.
Okay, next we have the police report. Should be in your, it's in your packet. Chief Pan, do you have anything to add?
I would just, I would just say, I mean, I'm sure everyone's taking a look at it. I would, I would say that we saw some small increases from February into March as the weather moved on. So we did have a nice increase in activity from the officers, you know, as far as context with the community. And the, probably the biggest increase there, one of the biggest increases numbers-wise is the alarm responses. And I would attribute that to probably the school, the spring break. And now, you know, few people coming in and out of the building when they're, they're not familiar with that, doing that. When you look at the current projects and goals and accomplishments for the year, we, I, I don't, I think we talked about it in the last board meetings, but I just wanted to mention we did do an open house for the Vertra and for the community. And we have like twenty-five people come through. It was pretty good turnout for that. And, and a lot of interest in that. I do have the summer planning for National Layout and, what, National Layout, Cap on, Cap on a Ruta, some of the, some of the other events that we're doing over the summers are, are in full planning swing now. And like National Layout, we're partnering, participating, participating in a lot. I don't have really anything further. I wouldn't like to mention we did, I don't know exactly what the source is. I think something that, that you know that the mayor sent out about, about us being listed in the top ten safest cities in Illinois. We're number ten of the, for the safest studies. So, I mean, that's not a police department, I can't take credit for that, but it's the community and the police officers, you know, but it's the partnership that matters. So that's, that was.
Believe they get that information from the F B I.
Yes, they, yeah. And, yeah, and we're, we report every month on that to the F B I, so that's.
When is your next coffee with the chiefs?
I don't have one scheduled right now.
Is our alarm responses, repeat offenders?
Yeah.
Name repeat offenders we've had in the past?
Yeah.
Because it's one hundred and fourteen percent increase, so.
And we still, you know, we, I mean, we do, obviously we track those and we do bill them for.
They pay.
This time Doug's had a chance to turn around.
Yeah.
My staff is here to support me on this. By the way, this is Gina from our police department. I haven't met her before.
Stand up, Gina. We can't see you.
How long have you been with the village units?
Uh, it's been almost eight years.
In full-time now for about.
Schools are the main culprits.
Yeah, unfortunately they are. The newer schools, victim elementary, I think their system is just more updated. The older schools, Hampshire Elementary, Hampshire Middle School, they probably have older systems. They're more sensitive. They have, you know, the consumers work in and out. Sometimes it'd be, people drop off the milk in the middle of the night or early, early mornings. So it's nothing, you know, nefarious. There's people going in and out.
No, no. No, but it's, it still takes two officers to go in and take care of that. And we talk about staffing of officers and needing people. And part of the fees we talked about to. That's coming out of the six cents on the dollar. It's incurving the behavior. And I'm not trying to go hard on the schools. I mean, I'm a teacher myself, so, I mean, I'm as pro-school as you can get.
You set up the alarm at your school?
Never, because I know how much money it costs. But I'm, my tax dollars, when you look at that dollar bill, most of it is going to that school. So, and then now I'm paying to remediate the alarm. It's infuriating is what it is. Like, I mean, I really would like the schools to be better stewards of the money that they get from the residents and not set that alarm off so much. Because, I mean, yeah, it's a, oops, sorry. That costs money. I mean, it adds up.
It's a safety issue.
And it's a safety issue. You pull two officers off the street.
Leave somebody by themselves, to potentially have to go to a domestic violence by themselves because we only have a few officers on.
And then most alarms are after hours. When does most, most of the trouble happen?
You may recall that the last time this came up, I did call both.
No, I know you didn't. I appreciate it.
And they both said that they're working on it. They didn't really say that they didn't care.
I'm, I'm not saying that they said they didn't care. I just.
They don't care if they ain't paying.
Yeah, dangers are obvious. I mean, that's about a lot.
And I know we talked about like raising the alarm fee for them, but that's us paying. It's not punishing them. I mean, and, and I don't mean to be punitive, but like something has to give in the, I mean, this.
It's been like this for eight years.
We've tried.
Here, it's never gonna change. There, there we go.
Anything else?
Not unique to our community either.
No, no, it's not.
Probably all of us.
No.
Anything else? Oh, it's Chief Pan. Do you have the streets report in your packet? Any questions regarding the street report? Some people questioned recently the time that it was rain, more rain than slush. The village was out salping. I, I got some calls on it. Dave goes with an infrared monitor and actually shoots the pavement. I have the same thing. He shoots all the pavement and they've got schedules and stuff that tell you if the pavement's at certain, at a certain temperature, the temperature's gonna drop to a certain thing that could create icing. So if you see the village out salping, you're thinking, why are they salping? Because it's raining? Because there's a lot of areas that is creating black ice. Because it's raining, because there's a lot of areas that is creating black ice and it's, it's cheaper to salt than to go to a funeral.
Probably also cheaper to salt than send our officers out to.
They're busy with alarms at the school. Okay, well, we have the accounts payable to personnel for the amount of eight hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Motion, Michael.
Second. Motion's been made seconded, any questions regarding that? Clerk Stuhler, please call the roll.
Ms. Spoder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Pallas, dreamy.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, you have the big one in front of you for three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents. That's our regular accounts payable. Questions?
I did want to note that we do have some old transition fees that are in here, which Mayor Pro Tem on page eight, floods royal flush.
That would be those fortisuries.
For what was it used for? That was, those are older invoices from when the food pantry was.
I've forgotten that, so last, last winter, not this past winter, but the winter before, the water lines over at the, where the food pantry used to be, over on Mill, they froze and actually they went in the well, the well just well pumped with that. The property owner, he didn't have the funds to get the water running right away. So we, we agreed that they couldn't operate the food pantry without, without operating bathrooms by code. So we asked flood brothers to put our, sorry, their royal flush division to put fortisuries and hand washing station over there so they could, they could have theirs there twice a month. So that went on for about four to five months, I believe, and these are two cleanup invoices for that.
Okay.
I did not ask them to donate that because it's for the village to do.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four budgets for three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Accounts paid, what a nice. Accounts paid. Motion made in second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk Stuhler, please call the roll.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Pallas, dreamy.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Spoder.
Aye.
Motion six zero.
Okay, next is our village board committee reports. We'll start off with the business development commission.
So BDC met last week, second Wednesday meeting, I had, I was not able, sorry. They did not meet, they were scheduled to meet, I was not able to attend.
They were not able to get it.
And apparently they I will report that I did send, since I was not able to attend in person, I sent notes for my report to the committee chair or commission chair. And in that report, it just stated what the recommendations of the village board and village budget committee had been regarding funding programs of that commission overseas, which was the facade grant, the continuation of that, the amount of fifty thousand for the next fiscal year, which as we all know is fifty percent reduction from previous years. But also including in the budget, the guaranteed of funding for the projects that have already been approved in this fiscal year to be paid out in the next fiscal year because of the projects. So I provided that information and they were not able to meet.
Okay, when's your next meeting?
It's the second Wednesday of every month, so it'll be the second Wednesday of May.
May. May eighth.
Eighth? So the BDC's next meeting is May eighth?
Yes.
Public Works Committee, none. Budget Committee.
I think everything about the budget committee's been discussed tonight.
Okay, any new business? Any announcements?
Mr. Coth, I would just like to thank yourself and the village board, as well as the Americas Not Here and all of our staff for the hard work that you all put in on the budget and for the tough votes that you all had tonight. It was not an easy year for all of us, but I believe it was a good year, fair year for our residents. And someday we will all look back on this and know that we did it, that you all did it right, thank you.
Can you ask the, for just the update, then the, I started to talk about the car lot and you said that was just a temporary thing, could you respond on that?
Oh, yes. So you, you all approved the lease, a short-term lease, two, two years left on it for us to lease the parking place up there, the parking lot, James Motors. So we used grindings from one of our former older street projects last year to put that lot from. Our own staff went up and scraped it, ground clear, and then we put that up there. And so they're leasing that from us for a dollar a year. This year, about three months, two months ago, apparently Stellantis finally figured out how to build cars. So they delivered a whole bunch of cars that had been on order for quite a long time, including a whole bunch that are not very stable, not big movers. So for the first time, James Motors now has a lot of inventory and a bunch, a bunch of big, still large vehicle, bigger than the
Boat.
The wagon area, that's a really expensive vehicle. What was he saying?
Boat.
I do have some very expensive golf carts that they had out there last year, if you recall. So I did receive a call from the owner saying that they had a challenge, a temporary challenge with parking and could we, could we help? So we are expanding. Today, our public works department gets scraped an additional fifty percent, we're increasing the lot size by fifty percent. And we will be using grindings from Duchess, which is being, it was ground today and it will be paved on Monday or Tuesday. One of our Duchess residents is here tonight. And so that'll be completed next week, weather permitting, early next week. So that, that parking lot will also be expanded next week. And I did not bring it to you to ask for a fifty cent increase in their rent. So I did speak to the Maravada, so we are accommodating James Motors needs.
So that's why they're parked up and down there.
Yes, temporarily on the road until we can get the parking lot expanded early next week.
They were putting all the grindings in today.
Yeah.
With the machine.
So that, I mean, it'll be open then, because I mean, we're telling everybody you can't park on the street and.
That is legal parking there, but we prefer that they not park it all the time, so they will be moving, they'll be off the street by next week.
Thank you.
It bears some of the long-term planning, because that's a short-term solution for that parking.
Yeah, there, I mean, that is a very short-term solution, because we do find money for our public works and drives, it'll be built on that side. So, you know, that's, James Motors is a private business that's going to have to support itself. They are a very important taxpayer to the village, both in sales tax and property taxes. But they, the owner of the business has been looking for new locations, he's considering building a new facility. Up until now, it's really been a matter, he has very low overhead here. And he's, he's still renting the village from the Sensel estate. So until Sensel either races around or kicks him out, I think he's going to take advantage of that low overhead.
Just a reminder that the Hampshire Lions Club combined with the Burlington Lions Club on Saturday, April the twentieth, at the Copper Barrel, they'll be having their meat raffle there. And the proceeds from that will go to the pantry.
Just at the Copper Barrel?
At the Copper Barrel, yes.
On April twenty-fifth, the Hampshire Township Historical Society is going to be doing their monthly program. And this one's on dairy farming and dairy farming in Hampshire and a lot of history about that. So I encourage people to go, April twenty-fifth, it'll be at six o'clock meeting, seven o'clock program over at the Tomship.
Can you watch that online from your house?
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
On the Facebook page, yes, you can.
So you don't have to go, you can stay at home and watch it.
People from other states that are now watching and seeing their old town from when they grew up and they're, they're enjoying all those. Took a long time for us to be able, Historical Society to be able to do that, take advantage.
I have, I have a question for Mr. Hedges, maybe for you. Thank you to the company that came back to redo those red bricks that were starting to look pretty awful. The day after they did it, there's an apparent, there's a definite color difference between bricks. Is that going to even out or are we going to, is it going to look like where they repaired some and some are old?
Well, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't always fade exactly the same. We have papers where it
The new ones will bleach out.
They've had to replace papers and so you see, there's a kind of a not so symmetrical pattern sometimes. It'll fade over time, but it probably will, it'll take a long time for that to be exactly the same color. But that's not in common, even for real papers, that, actually, for real papers, it's more.
And I, and I'll ask, because there was like strips where it had come out, but they took out entire sections and redid a whole section. So I wasn't understanding why they wouldn't, if they were taking that much, why they didn't do the whole thing versus just repairing. Like you said, when bricks need to be repaired, you can.
Actually, if it's, if it's properly adhered, I was out at the company while they were doing it, I think I texted a couple of you while I was doing it, somebody made a driven violence, the mayor, actually, sorry. The mayor texted me and said, we need better traffic control because there's four million streets, so I went out there. I did speak to the owner of the company, it was nice enough to come back and stand behind his work, even though it was passing. He, he took a blade and they were scraping loose and if they hit something that was really firm, it's really hard to get it up if it's adhered properly. Because the adhesive actually sinks into the, to the asphalt, it's really hard to separate. So when he would hit something that was so hard, he couldn't remove it, and he'd show me that, you know, this is the way it's supposed to be. So I'm going to leave that one there.
Gotcha, so that's larger than what was.
Yeah, and he said, in one case, there was just half of the brittleness in like, in the middle of a row. He took two whole rows because that, once he removed that one, clearly they did some bad adhesive that day. Either they had bad adhesive, it was, he didn't apply it right. It's a multi-step process, really interesting to watch it do that, because there's like three different, they sprinkle on top of a, of a step. And it's really interesting to watch. But I, I feel like they did really good work this time and I kind of felt like it's thicker than before, some of this. He agreed he'd be back again next year if there's any problems.
Thank you.
Any other announcements, new business? Any executive session?
No, sir.
Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to until May second.
Thanks, sir, second.
Clerk Stuhler, please call the roll.
Ms. Spoder.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Pallas, dreamy. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion six zero.
When you adjourn?
Thank you all.